Good evening, everybody. I am Mayor Mark Landman, and I'd like to welcome everybody in the audience, both physically as well as online, as we called order this joint meeting of the Katahdari City Council and the successor agency to the former Katahdari Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, March 13th. I'd like to begin by introducing the council and our city staff. I'm joined in the diocese by Vice Mayor John Delasso, and I am joined on the diocese through the telephone by Councilmember Susan Harvey from Spokane, Washington, tonight, as well as Councilmember Wendy Skilman and Councilmember John Moore. As well, we have City Manager Damian Ovid, our City Attorney Robin Donian, our Community Development Director Vicki Parker, our City Engineer/ Director of Public Works Craig Scott, and of course, our Administrative Services Director Norm Veloso. And tonight with us, we have Carrie Behon as our Administrative Secretary, and she'll be running everything for us over there. So with that, I'm going to ask her to start running the meeting for us by giving us a roll call, please.
Councilmember Skilman, here. Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Mayor Landman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Delasso?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
And it worked. The suspense is over. Good. All right. Well, I'm very pleased to know tonight we have Scout Troop joining us, and I wonder if I could ask the troop leader to step forward, if you'd be willing to come up to the mic for just a second, and introduce yourself and your troop.
Good evening. I'm Andrew Helgren, the Senior Patrol Leader of Boy Scout Troop Four here in Katahdari.
Andrew, very nice to have you here tonight. I wonder if I could ask you a favor. Would you be willing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir.
Very good. I'll ask you all to join Andrew then, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Thank you very much, Andrew. This brings us to item number four, which is approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. This is an action item. I'm going to ask the council if there's any objection to approving the minutes as written.
No objections.
Seeing none with that, I'm going to look to the public and see if anybody wants to comment on this item. Seeing none, I'll bring it back with no objections and abstentions. Minutes are approved.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. Because Councilmember Harvey is on the phone tonight, the Brown Act requires that all votes be taken by roll call, even on ministerial matters.
Ah, that as well. Okay, I knew some of our regular act. So we hold her fully responsible for this?
[laughing]
I see. Okay. So with that, I wonder if we could have a roll call, please, Ms. Behon. Thank you.
Councilmember Skilman?
No objection.
Councilmember Moore?
No objection.
Mayor Landman?
No objection.
Vice Mayor Delasso?
No objection.
Councilmember Harvey?
No objection.
And with that, I believe we have successfully passed the minutes. This brings us to announcements. And I'm beginning to begin with the meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whichever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Next, the City of Katahdari has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Katahdari Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Katahdari business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rona Park Katahdari Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit www.sonomolibrary.org. The Katahdari Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month. They're actually open right now, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and of course, by appointment. For information, you can call them at (707) 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Katahdari community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com. City of Katahdari Recreation Department is hosting its first annual bunny brunch and egg hunt on Sunday, March 25th, 2018, at 10:00 a.m. For ticket information, you can contact the Recreation Coordinator, Ashley Wilson, at awilson@katahdarecity.org, or call her at (665) 4222. And of course, the city offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and you can find the details of those on the web at katahdarecity.org. And we're next to item six, which is our honorary mayor. We're very pleased to welcome our honorary mayor for this meeting, Riley Jones of Rancho Katahdari High School. Welcome, Riley. Please come on up. So I'm going to ask you to begin by just taking a little time to tell us about yourself and what you're doing and what you plan to do.
My name's Riley Jones. I'm a junior at Rancho Katahdari High School. I've been living in Katahdari since I was about two, so I'm pretty familiar with the city. I know me and my little brother, during the summer, we really enjoy walking down to the park to see the farmer's market. For my plans for the future, I would like to go to San Diego State University, get a degree in kinesiology, and then from there pursue a career in physical therapy.
All right. Anything else you want to share with us? That's good for now. Okay, well, I don't get to let you off the quite that easy skid. I'm going to see if any of my colleagues in the council have any questions or comments that they'd like to share with us tonight. And I'll look over to this side to start. Councilmember Moore, would you like to lead us off?
Sure. Riley, thank you for participating, and congratulations on being honorary mayor.
Thank you.
A lot of times with kinesiology and that particular route, you, there's a lot of athletic background, and are you involved in sports right now?
Yes, I play, well, not currently. I play volleyball in the fall for my school, and I also played softball from the time I was five until my freshman year of high school.
I think I may have coached you or been part of that years ago.
I've probably seen your round.
I think that kinesiology and the physical therapy is going to be a field that's going to be wide open in the years to come, so that's going to be pretty busy for you, especially as us baby boomers get a little bit older and are meeting that physical therapy. So best of luck on that, and thank you.
Well, thank you again for being here tonight, and I wanted to give extra points to anybody on the diocese who actually spelled kinesiology correctly. But that's great that you've found a calling already that you're interested in. That's really fantastic. And I actually have friends who are physical therapists, and there's just, even once you get that degree, there's so many different ways that you can apply it, so that's really a great endeavor, and that's a great way to give back to people, too, and help them recover after injuries or accidents or whatever. So I'm very glad to have you here, and thank you for being our honorary mayor.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Delasso?
Yeah, welcome, Riley. I didn't attempt to spell kinesio, but I know it starts with a K. That's all that really matters. So how are you doing on your community service hours before you graduate?
I'm doing good. I have 65, so I'm good to graduate.
Which is more than 40?
Yes.
Well, that's a shame, because I was going to offer you, you know, there's a lot of opportunities here in Katahdari.
Oh, yes.
So if you or your friends are looking for additional community service hours, there's a lot of volunteer opportunities that we have here. And yeah, I think that's a very noble profession that you're going to. I've got a bad shoulder, and I think the most pain I've ever had was actually from a physical therapist.
[laughing]
It's amazing what they make you do, and then the fact that you don't think you can do it, but you actually do, but it hurts really bad. But it does help in the long term, so definitely. So yeah, it's great that you're here, and I always like to challenge people when you come back to the next meeting. If there are things that, you know, you're interested in seeing, or you or your friends interested in seeing the city that is a service for teens that maybe currently isn't offered, you know, our recreation program is offering a lot of opportunities for adults and for children, but also, you know, that's a, it's a really good field to get into, even kind of almost mirroring what you would be doing with kinesiology at some level. So if you can think of some of those things or talk about it with your friends, we'd love to hear that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thanks.
And next, I'm going to ask Councilmember Harvey if you have any questions or comments you'd like to share.
Yes, Riley, thank you very much for coming. I think that your background in sports, I think it well suits you to move forward with kinesiology. I think you've probably learned along the way that there are things that bodies can do and bodies can't do, so I think that that training sounds like softball since you were five. I think that will help you, and I wish you the best of luck, and thank you for being our honorary mayor.
Thank you.
And I'm going to echo my colleagues, and thank you for being our honorary mayor. Let's see. Number one, I think the vice mayor kind of tipped my hand a little bit here. Typically, we like to ask you when you come back to talk to your peers, if you have time, and get some suggestions. What are the things they like about living Katahdari? You shared some of them, some of the things you do with your brother. What are things that they really value? What are things that they think could be improved? Or what are things that are, just aren't here, then if possible, they'd like to see? That kind of report card on the community and how it works for them would be very valuable to us. Secondly, speaking, you mentioned your brother. Any family or anybody with, next time, we'd love to get a group photo together when you receive your commendation for us, so if anybody comes here with you, we'd be happy to do that. And as far as tonight, we know this is fascinating work, as the troop can tell you, but since this is a school night, we don't require honorary mayors to stay for the whole session if they don't want to, so I just wanted to let you know that. So thank you again for being honorary mayor.
Thank you.
And let's see here. Hang on just a second. And this is not an action item, so I'm going to move forward, Mr. Berich. So with that, we are to item number seven, which is presentations. And we have a presentation, a demonstration of the new city website. Mr. Ovid, can we have our presentation, please?
There it is. All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So as you recall, staff have been working with an ad hoc committee of the council and moving towards our new website. And just as you all know, we've talked about this before, but the new website is intended to really make it much more usable, especially these days when people are on mobile devices much more than they used to be when our original website or our current website was designed. So this is designed to be much more mobile-friendly, as well as, you know, we've actively been reorganizing information into, into places where we think users would most likely go for them. You know, we oftentimes, as you know, get, you know, in our own, in any organization, you kind of run your own department, and you kind of know your own thing pretty well, but if you're not familiar with the city or how the city's organized or the city functions, it may not be intuitive to you. So we spent quite a bit of time, too, and we're finishing this up right now, is reorganizing some of the information to hopefully put the things that people most commonly look for. I mean, we know them. We know what they come into the city hall for most often, and put those in places that are easily accessible and calling them things that people would call them if you don't know what the city does or how. You know, we have a lot of jargon, like any organization, and so we try to, you know, try to use plain English labels on stuff, and you'll see that as we go through this. But here is the, here is the webpage. I think last time we spoke about it, you guys saw the wireframe outline of it and the basic design. This is what it looks like. This is what the wireframe looks like painted, and functional, so we'll go through some of it. And this is the homepage, as I said, and the basic design of it is that you have these things across the top, organized into City Hall, which is essentially virtual, like a virtual city hall. If you're coming into the physical city hall, you know, what are the things that you come here for, and so things are organized in this, what they call mega menu. They call it a mega menu because it's a large menu. And I'll get back to this in a second. Explore Katahdari is people that are, you know, that are visiting or coming into Katahdari and maybe not familiar with what's in Katahdari or around Katahdari. Resident services are, like it sounds, things for people that live here, the things that come in and talk to us about. And then business services, and this would be existing businesses, new businesses that want to come into town, the development community, the contractor community, so those sort of things. And how do I are just some common things that we have people come into City Hall for, just try to create essentially a shortcut to those things, like getting dog licenses, building permits, getting a job, paying a bill, that kind of stuff. So in the middle of the page is, there's a search bar, all right, so you can search for anything on the website, kind of Google-ish like, so if you don't really know, even if it's, even if you don't see it on this homepage and you don't know where to start, you can look it up that way. And then down below here, these are some, some common things that we have people come in for, so we just put them front and center rather than in even in a mega menu. It's just on a tile on the homepage, and, I'm sorry. So we have, you know, jobs, this is looking at meetings, going to the meeting portal, visiting, you know, the visitor resources, business resources, and then Measure G resources, the annual report, and so forth. And then down below, that is the headlines, so these are just like, kind of like on our current website, we have a list of headlines. This is, you know, what the new headlines arrangement would be. So these are the top three, and then you can click on View All, which will take you to a page that has all of them that have been posted, or you can just, if you want, you can just go over, right, and circle, like kind of go through them, so. And then down below that is events. So again, these are upcoming city events. This is us tonight, right, and then some future events coming up, and then the same format where you can look at them all together, or you can scroll through them if you want. And then a map of Katahdari, where it is in the world, if you don't know where that, where Katahdari is. And then the normal stuff at the bottom, which is, you know, the address and contact information, hours, and social media links. And so this is what, if you're on a desktop computer, this is what it looks like. If you're on a mobile device, this is what it looks like. So the mega menus collapse into this, called a hamburger, hamburger menu, right? Rather than coming from the top, it slides out from the side, and it's, getting a little click happy there. Sorry about that. You'll also notice that the homepage image, it just changed from that mosaic to this creek image, which is, is how that works. It scrolls through images of the city upon refresh, as opposed to happening on a time interval or any other way you want to do it. But we decided to do it on a, on a, on a refresh, just so it's maybe a little less ADHD when you're looking at it, you know? It's not constantly moving. And for a similar reason, we didn't put a video on there, although you could also put a full motion video there as well. So anyway, I was going to, I was going to show you before I clicked prematurely on, this is basically the mega menu that you saw in the other view, but it just comes out on the side, and you follow it the same way. And then down below, those tiles that were oriented horizontally now stack vertically, and they're made to be, they're made to be kind of big and fat, so if you're on a touchscreen device and you don't want to try to peck at a hyperlink in text, it's just, you can easily navigate through it. And then the newsletters again, so it's just, you know, all the stuff's there, it just stacks vertically, reorients vertically by itself. And the other thing I was going to say, and I'll show you this, for example, this is again the mega menu for City Hall, and it's oriented into City Council, which is all the normal stuff that you see in our current website, but it's, you know, with hopefully a little bit more normal text, and then the Planning Commission, Design Review, Measure G, Successor Agency is all here. City Administration, News, Transparent Government, it's all the stuff. Just Transparent Government is all the stuff that people might look for, like MOU, salary schedules, meeting calendars, to try to put it all in one place for people that would be looking for that kind of stuff. Departments, these are all of our departments, of course, and just to give you an idea of kind of what these look like. So all the department pages are the same in terms of, in terms of layout. They have, in the center, sort of in the center column, they have a brief description of what the department does, and you might know, like in our current website, there's a really long narrative about each department, and the general design philosophy here was to, was to use words as little as possible to get people to where they want to go, rather than have someone have to read through texts and texts of paragraphs to try to figure out where it is they're trying to navigate to. It's really just to try to give people the Cliff Notes version of what this page is about so that they can navigate to where they want to go, and when they get to where they want to go, then they, then they can read pages of text if they want to. But navigating there, they don't, it's quick and simple, and so when you're on these pages, for example, these are the things that people come to this department for. And again, these, these are like the same sort of thing, where they're just tiles that you can touch with your finger. And then we have Department Head Picture on the, on the right pane, as well as the contact information, and below, below these buttons is the staff, the staff emails, and on the left side are just the upcoming event calendars. And this is the same format for all the pages, so unless you want to see a particular one, I won't, I won't drag you through each one of them, but this gives you the flavor. And then again, if you orient this, or if you're looking at this on a mobile device, you have your image on top, again with the hamburger menu, which functions the same way as I showed you before. But the way these things that are oriented horizontally on the page, how they stack when you shrink down to a tablet or a mobile view, is the calendar stacks on top, and then, and then the narrative. And I will say, too, that this is kind of like, this is just like Windows Explorer, right, so you can navigate this way as well, if you want to go up to the department level on the webpage or the city hall level. You can click on any one of those, go back up if you don't want to go through the other menus. And then below the narrative is the same buttons you saw, right, and then the staff emails, and then the contact information for the department, and the image for the director at the bottom. And then, again, the same format for the bottom follows all the pages. And as we, as we continue to develop this website out, we're going to keep on adding new business resources. The Chamber is also in the process of updating their website, and so we expect that they're going to be developing some additional resources that we'll link out to, once that's ready to go. And, but again, you know, these, these things that we put here, and this is a, this is a kind of a final thing that we're be cleaning up, this like white space gap in there, but anyway, that's, we're just going through it right now and, and making sure all of the information is, that we, you know, all the, all the information's organized the way we want it organized, all the last tweaks to things. And in terms of schedule, we're looking at having this live by the first week of April. And so tonight, really, I just, you know, just giving a high-level overview of what it's looking like right now, and seeing if, if you or the public has any input on it at this point that we should be thinking about before we, before we go live. And that'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think that was the perfect segue, so I'm going to start with council and see if we have any questions. And Councilmember Skilman, you were pretty quick with that. How about you go first?
I just have one quick, niggly thing. When you go to how do I, you're missing a verb under comments, so you're saying, how do I rent a park facility, then how do I comments or suggestions? So you probably want to make comments or suggestions. Anyway, that was, but otherwise, it looks really fantastic. I mean, it's just so much, so much more user-friendly than, than what we currently have, so. Looks good.
Grammar, please. I had a couple of questions on there. Will this site still lead to the meeting portal, or how will that be navigated?
It will. So for example, if we go to here, so this, this takes you to the meeting portal. This is, so the thing about the meeting portal is we can't make changes to it offline. Every change we make to it is live. So we were actually, we were making a change to it before we were changing the color scheme. We do have a new color scheme for this that you'll see when it goes live. It's a more of a teal color scheme, but we made the change, like, I don't know, like it was noon on Tuesday, and we suddenly got a bunch of calls, like what happened, like the website's different and things are, we're like, okay, put the color scheme back, and we'll just flip it, because it's easy to turn the color scheme on once we're ready. But this is, it does still link out to an external website, which is the meeting portal.
Okay. And then if you go back to the main page, and you have meet your council, do you anticipate that we have or will have the bandwidth where the introduction of councilmembers, mayor, might be live videos? Not live videos, but pre-recorded videos?
This, I'd have to, I'd have to look into this website. So this is a, this is the Exella, the outside website, and I know they have the capability certainly for static images. The way this is organized right now, and one of the things we'll be changing on it, and I will get back to your question in a second, but the way this is organized right now is the mayor and the clerk, is just how it was set up originally. One of the changes we will be making to it is, we're looking at making that to this, is putting the vice mayor up here and then moving the clerk down somewhere else on the page. And then, and to answer your question, I will ask, I'll follow up with Exella and see if we can put live video here. Certainly on the website that we are, the new website, there's a capability for live video on that website, so the short answer is, I don't know on this website. We can check into it, and we can potentially revisit that if it's not available on this Exella website.
Great. That's it.
Very good. Vice Mayor Delasso?
Yeah, I wasn't going to make any comments since I did at the subcommittee meeting, but what Councilmember Moore just brought up, isn't there a link from the new page for the mayor's message that stays on the new page? It doesn't go to Exella? So I mean, and if that's the case, then your link, you know, for your concern, the link could just be on this webpage. There's probably no need for it to be put onto Exella, you know, if there's bandwidth to do all that.
Yeah, it could, right. It could be that on this page, which is native to the new website, the video can be embedded here potentially.
Right. Exella is just a platform?
Yeah, it's shorthand. It's the, it's the name of the company that runs that hosted platform.
I just wanted to sound witty, like I knew what I was talking about. That's why I used Exella.
Didn't work.
It didn't work?
I was convinced. Totally convinced.
Tried.
Anything else, Mr. Vice Mayor?
No, sir, that's it.
I'm going to check. Councilmember Harvey, I know you're at a disadvantage of not quite being able to see this the way we do, but do you have any comments or questions or direction for staff?
No, I just can't wait till it's live, because using it from either an iPhone or an iPad, this will be such a great improvement. I can't wait.
Okay, good. Well, evidently you missed your chance to see part of it, at least for a bit, at least the color scheme, it sounds like, so. All right. So a couple of quick questions for you. The how do I section, I take, are those our most common searches that we tabulated? That's how we came, arrived at those?
Yeah, those are the things that we see most often that people come in for.
And the one, and since I wouldn't be, I don't want you to be alone feeling like you're the only niggly one, I'll be a little niggly, too. I just wanted to ask about the tiles. We saw at the bottom, I believe in one of the early pages, they have a white background, and they have some different graphics, and some are kind of graphics, those object-oriented, drawn ones, and others are photos, and they all have kind of a rather large white background. Are those final graphics for that, or are they going to be more consistent, either all photos or all graphics when we're done?
Like these here, these tiles across?
Exactly, yeah. I'm looking at the variety of different image I'm looking at the variety of different image types and stuff. Some, there was a couple where there were photos, some are, I was just curious if that was the final renders with those.
You know, it's what we have right now, but we, you know, we certainly could change them. I mean, they're easily changeable.
What's important is functionality for the public, so I don't, I just wanted to check it. I like the layout, everything else. I love the refreshing, random, I think that's great. We've got a lot of great imagery in this community to put out there, so that's good. That's the one thing that struck me is perhaps could be stronger, or it looks more dated as opposed to newer and fresher, so, okay. Anything else from the Council? Now, this typically is an action item, but since we've given some direction here and since the city manager did indicate he was interested in hearing from the public, I'm going to go ahead and open it up and I'm going to see if anybody would like to comment. So if anybody has any questions, comments, including our observers tonight about this website, I'm going to welcome you to come up. Mr. Berich.
Council, I'll be brief for the benefit of the audience. I'm former City Councilman George Berich. I have two issues. First issue is I want to thank Susan Harvey for being available to the meeting via the telephone, but she should be able to view this via the internet. We've spent a ton of money on televising and live streaming these meetings, and Mrs. Harvey should be able to follow along if she has internet access and watch what's happening here. The other issue is I appreciate the comprehensive presentation, but I think it's always a good service to the community as we go along in this process, is to remind the public how much money we've spent on this project. Because we keep telling the kids, "We don't have any money for this, we don't have any money for that." Forget about a skateboard park and so forth, because this was a ton of money also.
Thank you. And I'm going to look around and see, anybody else want to speak in this? And not seeing any takers, we're going to close and bring it back. All right, any final comments from the Council on this or we move on? I think you have some input and direction, and thank you for bringing that. And this takes us to item eight, which is approval of the final agenda. This is an action item. I'm going to check with the city manager first and see if we have any changes to the final agenda.
There are no changes, Mayor.
No changes. And look and see if anybody wants to speak in that? No? Very good. That takes us tonight. This is Citizen Business and Public Common for Consent Calendar Items. And I have a little legalese to read you about it, so you'll know what, how this works. And this is the time that any member of the public wishing to speak to the Council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Council, to be able to do so at this time. Now pursuant to the Brown Act, the Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. So I don't have any cards. I'm going to open this and see if, that was the quickest hand I saw. Ms. Alderman.
The city seems to have some problems with understanding some words. One is contest. The photo contest, they put it on Facebook, they did not acknowledge who submitted the photos. They did not vote, they did not have any awards, so that is not a contest. But I went and by Facebook likes, likes, I have the winners. This is by far first prize, and it wins first prize. Spirit of Kattati Award, and first prize. But I don't know who it goes to because there's no credits to it. Okay? Next is another one, I don't know, because we weren't given any credit, but it's the Christmas tree. And then, the second through fourth were all tied. Next is Rancho Adobe Sunset by Rancho Adobe Fire District, at least I know from that one. It's obviously from the district. And they got honorable mention. And then somebody called Lori Alderman got peacocks galore as honorable mention. I'm going to give these to Carrie, to Mr. Yerkes. Then I want you guys have a thing about your own financial awards. You didn't have competition for those financial awards. They were, we looked into it, and you had to be a member of the society, and then you had to pay $200 to be an entry in it. That, that's why there was no other, other than Santa Rosa that has won it for the last 12 years and never made a big deal. You guys make the community voice for basically buying an award for yourselves. You should get an award like this. This is my Kattati Indians softball, 1976 Most Improved Player. Yes, you're Most Improved, but you're not, you are not comparing yourselves to anyone, any local, or anything like that. And it's a sham that you put on that you got on the community voice that you have a great budget and all this when it's not true, it's not honest. I do appreciate Norm's contributions, and I don't want to put that, but I don't like having that. Okay. Now I'm going on to Consent Calendar. Okay. I would like to have the St. Joseph's Sewer Replacement Project construction, contract pulled because that shouldn't be, that should be an action item, a regular agenda item, not a, we, it said that in 2009, this was approved. Then suddenly we have a hotel, and it is part of the deal for the last four years for the city to pay for the sewer. The hotel developer should be paying for that. My Freedom of Information Act showed that this deal will in place, and it is not fair for the citizens of Kattati to be paying for a sewer for the hotel, especially one that is not developed. And also, okay, sorry, the sewer, you say it's for development, but why do we suddenly need it when we have a hotel plan? That is not anything that's transparent or anything like that. If you're going to have a $32 million hotel coming in, the employee, we as citizens should not be paying for these, for these, sorry, I'm tired, for these things that the hotel should be paying. And it's part of the deal, and you all know it, it's part of the Freedom of Information Act I have that shows the deal. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, I'm going to look and see. Mr. Berich, please approach.
I want to welcome the public to this meeting tonight and our folks at home. Again, former City Councilmember Berich, I don't understand why the mayor doesn't want to call me that. There may be some jealousy here that I was elected to the City Council, he was appointed, but we're going to stay on that. I would like to speak to our honorary mayor tonight, this nice young lady. I want this young lady to know that the City Council are not your friends. I don't care what, how they sell it, they are not your friends. The City Council cared about you young students, they would go to your schools, they would go to your classrooms, they would go out on the play yard, and they would talk to the students, they would give presentations, they would explain what it's like to run city government. They would take your questions, they would take your ideas, but they don't because they're lazy. They don't care about you. The City Council marches these kids up here, all part of their political feel-good theater, because that's what it is. They won't take any time to go talk to you one-on-one. The City Council limits the taxpayers' time to speak to three minutes, but lets their friends and their guests speak unlimited. No other cities have an honorary mayor program. We've checked, we've called, and for very good reason, they say it's silly. Or you get an excuse that we'll look into it. 10, 15 years later, they're still not doing it because it's silly. The paperwork that they're going to give you when you come back is worthless, worthless certificate, can't use it to get into college or anyplace else. It's an insult. Why do they do this? The Council plays the race card, you make fun of people's disabilities, like Ms. Alderman, you ignore the homeless problem, you don't spend a dime on the homeless, but thousands and thousands of dollars on website updates and televising the meetings and so forth. We have a, we have a council member here that was convicted of drunk driving. Council continuously lies, they continually cover up, they break the Brown Act, they ignore their own code of conduct time and time again. Any complaints about their conduct are thrown in the garbage. I want this young lady to know this, what she's gotten herself into, or what her school administrators have gotten themselves into. I want her to know, if she ever is, as an adult, puts in a public records request act, she probably won't get it, it will be delayed, or the city will claim they lost the information. Isn't that right, Lori? If you, young lady, ever come to the City Council and you disagree with the City Council, they will mock you, they will have the last word. If you someday challenge them at the ballot box and you choose to run against people like this, they will try to destroy you through slander, through libel, they will boycott your business. And as Mr. Moore said, Mr. Berich, I'm going to run you out of town. If you are ever homeless in this town, they will ignore you. If you are an illegal alien, they will help you to sign up and vote. They are bought and sold politicians of the first order. And I'm going to keep reminding our honorary mayors that this is the case.
And thank you, Mr. Berich. Did you want to speak in consent, Mr. Berich? You might want to stay there then.
On item B?
If we could restart the clock for Mr. Berich for consent, please.
I'll be short, Mayor.
Thank you.
I have the decency to call you Mayor, although you don't have the decency to return the respect to me.
Consent calendar, please, Mr. Berich.
Right, okay. On item B, it is outrageous that the taxpayers have to fit the bill for half a million dollars for a hotel project where there was no competitive bidding. This project didn't go out to any other company. This whole project stinks to high heaven. I wasn't able to bid on a project out there. My colleagues and my associates weren't able to bid anything. We're going to find out, Lori, through all this, we're going to find out how this all happened, how you ramrodded this project through, and you're giving special treatment now to this developer to ask the taxpayers to fit a half million dollar sewer project when you have no money for a skateboard park, you have no money for a decent dog park, you don't have a dime for a homeless project here in Kattati, even to bus them out to a real homeless shelter. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves. You think you're going to get away with this? You're not. Lori's doing the proper investigation, your attorneys aren't going to get you out of this one.
And thank you, Mr. Berich. All right, so if nobody else wants to speak, we had a riveting example for you to watch here, and Public Common is closed. And we're going to bring this back. Certainly, hang on just a second, I'll be right with you. Let's see, we have all consent, and anybody wants to speak in consent one last time? None? Then we are definitely back and closed. And I'll see if we have any Council direction.
If I can get my microphone on. I just want to make a couple verifying statements.
Certainly, please, go ahead.
This is if I may. First of all, we just started an initial park master plans, talked about different things like skateboard parks and things like that, but apparently Mr. Berich was not available for that. That's an ongoing series that we're going to have next weekend and the following weekend to talk about the different things that might go on in our parks. Secondly, I never once said I was going to run you out of town.
Mr. Berich, you're out of order. You've had your, you've had your opportunity to speak, now he gets his. This is the way we do it as grownups here. Thank you.
And the only other thing I was going to say was in reference to a hotel project and a sewer line project. That sewer line project has been looked at for the last five or six years in order to upgrade that. So that maybe some way, sometime down the road, if we decided we wanted to do something like that, it would be available. So that's been in the works for quite a while, regardless of whatever would come in. Thank you very much, Mayor Lyman.
Vice Mayor, believe you indicated you wanted to comment on something?
Yeah, I was rereading the report for that same item, and it's $127,000, which is a pretty far cry from a half a million dollars. Mr. Berich was hearing that statement?
I'm being clarified by somebody I trust.
Thank you.
As we all are. Thank you, Mr. Deloso. Very good. So with that, I actually had a quick question for staff. Wanted to talk a little bit, I was going to ask Mr. Deloso, I wonder if you could speak a little to the awards that you received for this, the two awards, congratulations again, by the way. You know, when I was in the fire department, if we got in the newspaper like you did, we had to buy ice cream for everybody. I think this means you have to do it twice. I hope everybody in City Hall will hold him to that. What I wanted to ask you about, just to talk a little bit about the process, the judging standard that's involved first, and I have a couple other things. If you could just give us a quick reminder of that, because as I remember, it was pretty stringent and the people doing this judging were pretty serious. This wasn't a vanity press award type of thing.
The simple answer to that is yes. It's a very strict process of review done by members in the Government Finance Office Association. This program, budget program, has been in place for many, many decades, and big cities had been mostly a recipient of these awards. And I would like to say that we are fortunate to be a recipient of two awards this year for the Excellence in Budget, coming from the California Society of Finance Officers and the Government Finance Officers Association, which covers both the United States and Canada. I just wanted to make clear that this award, the payment that was made was an entry fee, and it's available for members and non-members in the entire United States and Canada.
Well, you kind of segued to one of my questions and got it out of the way. I was going to ask you about that, because in my experience, professional competitions, there usually are entry fees. Several, about a decade and a half ago, I used to be involved working in graphics in some of the more prestigious awards, illustrators' annuals and things like that. You do pay to enter, and lots of people pay to enter, only few are selected though. And I would imagine this holds true in this field as well.
I just wanted to mention that not everyone that submits an award, an application to receive an award, receive an award. I came from a different city, and for one of the awards that the Government Finance Officers Association, we submitted a particular, not the budget, but the financial, the CAFR. And unfortunately, we didn't receive the award in one year. So that proves and speaks volume that to receive an award is something that is given to a city or agency that is, I would say, met all the qualifications and requirements to receive this award. These awards are act- Uh, these awards are actually reviewed by experienced, professional, educated people in the finance industry that are well-versed in the, 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 uh, the process, the, uh, pronouncements, the, uh, best practice in both, uh, budgeting and financial reporting.
Excellent, good. Well, thank you again for taking through this. Fair questions, but I find those more than satisfactory answers. Excuse me, please don't interrupt. I have the floor, you're interrupting. You're interrupting, Mr. Berich, you're out of order. Please stop. Mr. Berich, I'm gonna warn you, please not to interrupt the flow of the meeting. We're trying to make progress of the meeting, please do that. And you're dragging this out longer. I'm gonna give you one warning, please stop. I'm asking you, admonishing you both, please stop. So...
Um, Mayor, just one last thing, I'll just add, that, Norm. Um, it's just real quick.
If you want to... The danger, Mr. Obit, certainly.
It is, real quick. So, I, I just wanted to clarify that the application fee is an application fee to administer the program. The reviewers are not paid. So the implication that somehow we're buying an award is just preposterous.
Well, I could understand if somebody looks at that, they could see that. That's why I wanted to ask you this, 'cause I think it's a very fair question and I appreciate the answers. Thank you. So with that, and I'm gonna warn you both one more time, please. You're disrupting the orderly process of the meeting. Uh, please confine your remarks to the, to, to when the time for public comment comes. So moving forward, we are to direction on future agenda items. We haven't done consent count, well, thank you. This is what happens. So let's do the consent calendar. Getting back to item 10. So, I'm looking for a motion of consent. Do we have any council members who wish to pull anything?
I'd move to approve Adams A through D.
I'll second that. Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We need a roll call, that's right. Very good. So with that, I'm gonna ask if we can have a roll call from Clerk's desk.
Councilmember Skilman?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deloso?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Good, we still have you. All right, so this does take us to item 11, which is direction of future agenda items. And I'm gonna check briefly and see if anybody has anything to pull forward tonight.
Mayor Landman, yes, I'm wondering if in our progress moving forward and we're looking at the parks plans and some of the things that are happening with parks and wrecks, if we might, um, have an opportunity to review a potential teen center? And, and maybe if we, if it's a, a slow and steady process, if we initiate that, maybe we can have something up, um, by next year or something.
Very good. Anything else from the council? Seeing none, nothing from staff? Then we move to the regular agenda, which is an actual item, item 12. And this is item A, the St. Joseph Park and Ride Replacement Design.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, um, this item, just to go back in time first, um, to set the context, there's a hundred and sixty-six spaces at the former Caltrans Park and Ride Lot at St. Joseph's Way. And, um, for many years, it was, um, in particular since the development of the new park and ride lots at Apple Valley as well as around Rona Park Expressway, um, it has seen very little usage since those new park and ride lots opened up. And, um, uh, it also had been, for many years, in, in issue with developing the Northern Gateway, 'cause it was a large piece of property that was essentially unavailable and inhibited any sort of economic development in that part of the city. So, after the, the city adopted the downtown specific plan, um, through, was really quite, um, uh, a, a very inventive and kinda monumental thing. The, the city was able to, with the support of, um, the local elected leaders as well as, um, state, um, elected officials, was able to negotiate with Caltrans to, um, get a property exchange negotiated. So, if you try to go through the Caltrans surplus property process, which is where Caltrans deems something surplus property and then puts it up for sale, it, even if they were amenable to that, I mean, you could pretty much wait twenty years for something like that to happen. So, um, that both, both the deal, the structure of the deal itself, as well as the timeframe, were incredibly inventive, you know, on the Caltrans side and, and, um, with the, with the support of local officials, were able to make it happen, which was huge. And, um, as you all know, but for the benefit of the public, who may not be familiar with it, this, in essence, what it is, is, um, Caltrans would provide that property to the city and the city in return would provide new, um, parking, commuter parking spaces at places that Caltrans had deemed, um, more important, given the new HOV system that's opened up on 101. And the two spots that they chose were the Airport Boulevard area as well as the Pedaluma Boulevard South. Um, both currently owned by Caltrans, but, um, either oversubscribed or undeveloped at this point for parking lots. And, um, and the city, through the sale, the eventual sale of the, um, the, the current, the current park and ride at St. Joseph's, would use the sale proceeds to fund the construction of the offsite. So it's basically a net-zero property transfer. And the first step in doing that is, um, is starting to design those offsite lots. And this design agreement that's in the council packet tonight is the, um, is the proposed scope and cost for the design agreement to begin the design of the offsite lots at the airport as well as, um, the oversubscribed Pedaluma Boulevard South locations. And, um, the, this, um, the scope of work, we had put it out originally. Um, we put it out for proposals. And then, um, just from delay and timelines, we, it ended up getting stale. So we put it out again, and then we put it out yet a third time to try to get the best price we could on the design services. And, um, uh, the cost of it's included in the financial considerations, but this, we feel, is the best cost for the design, um, that, that we need to do. And in terms of timeframe, we need to get it going now, just so that, um, you know, time, the timeline coincides with what is currently planned for an eventual sale of the property through the sale agreement that the council approved, um, a little while ago. So, um, I think, I think that is it. But I will also add that, um, that the city did, through review of the Caltrans regulations, find a way to review, have this, this design project reviewed through what they call a peer process, which, um, uh, which would save the city about another fifty thousand dollars in cost, which is a good thing. Back during the recession, Caltrans changed their, um, changed their rules for local projects, what they call local projects, locally-sponsored projects. It used to be that Caltrans would re, would review them at their own cost, basically their own staff time. And during the recession, like everyone was doing to find money and cut costs, they basically changed that rule, instead any local projects. If you design a Caltrans facility, if you, you know, city or county or whatever, if you're designing a facility for us, for Caltrans, we'll review it for you, but you're gonna pay us for our time to review it. Um, the exception being if you can find it, find a way to make it a peer process project, which is what this one, we believe is. So, um, that, that will also save some money. And, um, design costs, I will also point out, would be funded out of Fund 219, which is some one-time funding that we got for economic development. And the intent would be to, basically, um, if the funds are available after the property sale, to, um, transfer that back, that seed money back, to be able to use it for additional stuff in the future. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Well, then I'll bring it back to the council, see if we have any clarifying questions for staff? Looking at anything?
Mayor?
Councilmember Harvey, would you like to have, do you have any questions?
I have two questions.
Please.
That'd be okay. Um, on page seventy-four on the project schedule, it states that, um, we're asking that they complete by the end of 2018. And they said, as long as there's no major environmental or geotechnical issues and that they can be accepted in the peer process, that they think that that will be enough time. My question is, is will it, if they find out any of those items, uh, won't work for them, will that come back to the council? And my second question is similar. Um, down towards the bottom of that page, it talks about, um, exclude items and services. And again, if any of those items are uncovered, will that come back to the council?
So we have two questions there. Anything else before I turn this back to staff from us? No? So we have two questions, uh, from Councilmember Harvey for staff.
So, um, on the, on the schedule question, if, if it results in a delay, um, a delay by itself wouldn't necessarily bring it back to council. But if there's, um, a delay that, if there's something, if one of the reasons for the delay results in additional costs that exceed what the council's authorized for the, for the design scope, then it would come back to council. Um, if it's just a delay, a no-cost delay, or a delay that doesn't exceed the authority provided by council tonight, then it would not. In, in the same, um, basic answer with the assumptions, if some of those other assumptions and limitations on the scope, if, um, they result in scope changes that exceed what the council's authorized, then, um, it would come back to council. But otherwise, it would be managed within the contract process.
Very good. All right, with that...
Thank you.
Now see if we have nothing further. One more thing from council.
The, um, both of those sites are already existing sites for park rides, aren't they?
Yes.
And so they're just a matter of expanding those.
The, um, that is true for the Pedaluma Boulevard one. The airport one is, uh, a Caltrans-owned property, but it's not currently developed as a park and ride.
Okay. But there's not likely to be a lot of, um, impediments in the way, based on the location, being run up by the freeway there?
Yeah, there's none expected. It's, yeah, nothing significant is expected.
Thank you.
I had a couple, I just wanted to confirm. So, this has a long history to it, and as usual, where anything working with Caltrans or a project is difficult, it does become complex. So, I just wanna clarify, this has been out not just once, but evidently three separate times to bid, and two separate bidders have reviewed and bid on this in culmination of the project, correct?
That's correct.
And did we select the lowest bid? The lowest responsive bid, rather, excuse me.
It is, I, we, we think it's, I mean, the both bids are essentially the same.
Okay.
And we think that they're, that the one that was chosen is well-qualified.
Good.
Best choice.
Very good. Well, with that, I'm gonna open this up to public comment. Who'd like to speak? Ms. Alderman, once again, you're the quickest.
Um, one thing I wanted to clarify is that this, um, you are, the city will be receiving two-point-four million, and the five-hundred thousand is not coming out of that directly. It is come, it says that it's coming out of property taxes. So we are basically, yes, it may eventually, but we are fronting, the taxpayers of the city are fronting the money, um, for the, the park and lots, park and ride lots. The other thing is, on page fifty-nine, um, you refer to this as a development agreement with a hotel. I were, um, I repeatedly said that it was a development agreement when it was in November and December, and was told by Damian and you guys that it was not. It is, and here you're saying it's a development agreement. You have had no public input on the hotel as required for a development agreement. So, this, how, you're continuing ram-rotting this hotel through without public input? Without the, it could, we could be spending all this money and no hotel goes through. And it'll be on the taxpayers. And you, and you basically said it over and over again, it was not a development agreement. And then here you go, and months later, and say it is. What is the truth? You know, why, if, under some section code, you have to have public input on a development agreement? Hardly anybody knows about this hotel. You know, that is four stories. You, you don't, that, it's not concept. It's, there's designs, I mean, the Public Records Act, I had, everything's down to details. This is a done deal. And you have had no public input, and I, and I can't believe that you now say it's a development agreement. Thank you.
I'm sorry, if, I just might ask you, word, you said page fifty-nine?
I think it was fifty-nine.
And it says development agreement?
Yes.
Could you, you couldn't give me the paragraph or anything? I'm trying to see it, I'm just not seeing it. If you see it, feel free to let me know, that would be helpful. Thank you. All right. And I'm gonna welcome Mr. Berich.
Counsel, over the last twenty years, attending these meetings religiously, I think I can count the amount of meetings I've missed on one hand, this is the shadiest deal, I think, I've ever seen come through Cattati. This would make the mafia blush. I, Lori is one-hundred percent correct in her research and her analysis of this, but I wanna bring up another point that the city manager brought up. He brought up the downtown specific plan. For all intensive purposes, the downtown specific plan is dead because I was on the city council in 2009 when the city council passed this downtown specific plan four to one. I was the lone no-vote against it and gave a seven-minute presentation why it was bad for Cattati. The downtown specific plan being a seventy-three-million-dollar build-out in Cattati, public money. You can look over the downtown specific plan and read it for yourself over a thirty-year period. Money of which Diane Thompson, city manager at the time, said the majority of that money would become from government grants. Ten years have passed. And what have we gotten in government grants? About a one-point-five-million-dollar grant from the Obama, Obama stimulus disaster. Okay? So we found out at least we're a million and a half of that eight-hundred-and-thirty-one billion dollars went to. So, ten years, we've gotten a million and a half dollars. And we got twenty years left to go. So we're gonna have to come up with another seventy-one million dollars to build out the downtown specific plan in the next twenty years. It's a joke. It was a joke on day one, it's a joke ten years later. And now this type of corruption and cronyism and favoritism is beyond the pale.
Thank you, Mr. Berich. All right, would anybody else like to speak on this? No? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back to the council. Uh, I have a question for staff. I'm looking, and if I've missed this, let me know. I do see on page fifty-nine, in paragraph three, under analysis discussion, that it mentions the city council authorized... Excuse me, I'm speaking, please don't interrupt. Please approach the podium, I did ask you. I see, what I wanted to say, maybe this will be helpful for you, we can see we're thinking the same way. Are you talking about the part where it says disposition sale agreement?
Yes, I read something two days ago that said development agreement. It has been changed as of today, 'cause my new copy says disposition agreement. It was changed. But it did say, over the weekend, development agreement.
This is the published packet I have, it does say disposition sale agreement. So, that's all I can tell you about that. All right, does anybody else in the council have any questions, discussions on this? No? Well, I do have a couple of things. First of all, I'm gonna congratulate staff. If anybody out in the public has ever worked with Caltrans, and this is not to denigrate Caltrans, they're a remarkable organization that handle projects of just breathtaking complexity. But with that complexity, it is a slow slog working with them. And to be able to thread the needle, as Mr. Obit and his crew did for several years in this, led us to this point, I think frankly is remarkable. You will note during this process, we work with several large engineering firms to try and get bids to do this work. And one of the things that put them off was, we have to deal with Caltrans. That's a lot of work, they're tough, you gotta jump through a lot of hoops. So I think it just gives us an idea of the level of people we have working here for our community in Cattati. And again, I wanna congratulate in that, 'cause I'm very pleased with that. So with that, um, that's the only comment I had. If there's no other comments from anybody? Councilmember Harvey, did you have anything?
Uh, no, no more comments, thank you.
Very good. And I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with BKF engineers to design the replacement park and ride lot for Caltrans.
I'll second that. So we have a motion, a second, from Deloso and Moore? All in favor, please say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, excuse me. You know, by the end of the evening, I'll actually learn this. I, I'm gonna have to have you all start yelling at me, roll call. All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Skilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Absolutely.
Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deloso?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Very good. And with that, that carries unanimously. Thank you for that, counsel. And let's see, that concludes the regular agenda and brings us to item thirteen, which is the city manager's report. So you are up once again, Mr. Obit.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, so... So, just a reminder that the city issued a request for proposals on February 21st, seeking applications for available cannabis businesses. Those applications are due March 26th, and the staff committee will review and rank the applications first and bring recommendations forward for council consideration, which we expect would take, take place in May. And if not all of the available licenses are issued in that first round, then there is a plan to do a second round later in the summer and continue that process until all the licenses have been issued. And if anyone's interested, they can contact Vicky Parker in the Community Development Department, 665-3637, or vparker@kattatcity.org. Also, their, the Wayfinding Program has gotten underway, and we had a kickoff meeting on March 6th, and are also currently running a Survey Monkey to get additional feedback from members of the community who were not able to attend. So, at the meeting, there was a paper survey that was passed around, asking for feedback on some list of questions. That same list is also out on this online survey tool. So, if you haven't, if you didn't have the chance to attend that meeting, please go to our Facebook page, and you'll find the Survey Monkey link there. And for more information, you can contact John Paul Harrys at the Community Development Department. His number is 665-3634. And was alluded to, it was alluded to earlier tonight, but last Saturday, March 10th, we had our first of three Park Master Planning meetings with the focus on Draper Park, Floodi Park, La Plaza Park, and the Laguna Trail is literally the thread that runs through all three Park Master Plan public workshops. So, these are organized geographically, roughly geographically. So, the second meeting is, second workshop's going to be this, this coming Saturday, March 17th. It will focus on Kattati Park, Sunflower Park, Putnam Park, and Santero Way Park. And then the third workshop will be on March 24th, and will focus on Civic Center Park, which is this park, Vets Park, and Delano Park. And all workshops start at 1:00 PM here in the City Hall council chambers. So, I'd encourage everyone to come if, if they weren't able to make the first one. And even though there's a focus on certain areas at each meeting, input's welcome for any park at any time, if you're not able to make one of the specific meetings for a park you might be interested in. The office model, office remodel, I'm sorry, for engineering and planning building, community development is done, so they're no longer over in the classrooms, now they're back in their normal space. So, if you haven't had a chance to come visit their new office space, you should pop on down and say hi. It's a much more functional layout, and, you know, hopefully a much better customer experience, too, as they, as they come to those departments for service. And I will also say that some miscellaneous public work stuff has been happening since the last meeting. There was a, there was a citizen comment in one of the recent council meetings about tree roots in East Kattati Avenue over by Sunflower Park. There's some pine trees there that every, I don't know, every five years or so buckle the asphalt on the side of the road, because they're close to the road. And the bike lane always takes the brunt of it, because it's the closest to the edge of the curb. And Public Works was out there last, last week, or the week before. It was on Facebook, too, but anyway, they dug it out and cut the tree roots back and repatched it. So, the, the exciting experience, if you go on the bike lane, it's much more boring now, which is a good thing for cyclists. And also, we had added some new speed limit signage on all roadway highway between the park and 116, just to fill in some, you know, to make it more informative as people are changing, there are some different speed zones in there between the park and then the rest of all roadway highway, so that's a recent change. And then, on the recreation side, our spring summer activity, Community Activity Guide will be coming out soon, so look for that. It'll include all of our new recreation class schedules, as well as a bunch of new summer camps that are coming up. And then, on just March 23rd, I mentioned this the last meeting, we have our Next Parents' Night Out from 5:00 to 10:00 PM. This is where parents can leave their children at the community center and go out and enjoy a night out together. So, if there's any parents that are needing a night out, we encourage them to sign up for that. The kids will have pizza dinner, games, crafts, and all sorts of fun. I'm assured that there's no Mountain Dew or anything like that served there, so when they go home, they actually can go to sleep. And if anyone has any questions about rec classes or activities coming up, you can contact Ashley Wilson at 665-4222, or awilson@kattatcity.org. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. Any questions for the city manager from council?
I just had a couple of quick questions. On the remodel, will you be having any sort of cupcake affair? To display that? Are you going to do any walkthroughs or anything?
Um, I, you know, we'll have to talk about that, some sort of, you know, maybe reception, but we haven't had that discussion yet.
And then, you alluded to the Parents' Night Out together? Do they have to be?
You know, we don't judge, so parents can leave their kids there, and what they do after they leave is whatever, you know.
Thank you.
We serve different age groups, I suspect, so there we go. Councilmember Harvey, did you have any questions for the city manager for his report?
Uh, Mayor, I have one.
Please, go ahead.
Um, you mentioned trees, and I want to say thank you to whoever cut down the trees by the legal defense. They are in much better shape now, and it's so much easier to walk under them. So, whoever did it, thank you so much.
Very good. And if, anything else from council on that? We're going to jump right over to council member reports, and I'll see if the vice mayor would like to start us tonight.
I'd be delighted to. A series of meetings since our last council meeting, two weeks ago, we had our monthly Sonoma County Ag and Open Space District meeting. The focus was on a couple of very specific land conservation plots and easements, but most of the time was spent on Roseland Creek. Roseland Creek is an area in Santa Rosa where two parcels that really are not adjacent, there's a gap in the middle, but two parcels over the years have been purchased, and the idea was to create a park space with some passive, passive use of that land, but really to, there's a gentleman who has come to every Ag and Open Space meeting since the district was created, and he refers to that, oh, great, I didn't, I can't remember it, and I didn't write it down, but there's a classic word he uses to refer to that little stretch of land. He's very passionate about it, and about 20 to 25 people came to our meeting to speak on this topic, because the concern is that the city of Santa Rosa, who'd been putting into the matching grant program to purchase the land with Ag and Open Space dollars leveraged, has basically told these residents, here's going to be the use of this area. And they have, not that these are horrible things, mind you, but they have a bicycle trail through there, and some other far more active types of activities and use than the residents had expected over the many years. This project's been going on for about 12 years now. So, so they're very upset and very passionate about it. I'm still getting emails as the chair of the group, but I think, you know, where staff was directed to talk to the city of Santa Rosa, because, as it turns out, even though they were given a grant two years ago in the last cycle, they still have not turned in everything that they have to turn in to get the matching grant, so that will be held over them, and we'll see how that goes. Moving on, I also attended the Health Action Council on the 2nd of March, and there were several presentations made at that. This is a very large group. There's representatives from the county and all the cities, but also the medical field and the educational field. So, people from Sonoma State and Santa Rosa Junior College, a lot of people involved in all the different medical professions in the county. And there was one, I thought, very clever idea that was brought up, and it's being done in the city of Sebastopol, I believe it's called the Gravenstein Network, but I'm not 100% sure on that name. And they had an open parcel of land, I think it was a mobile home site that was, I don't know the background, but it was no longer being used as a mobile home site. So, the debris had been removed, and they have decided to purchase either motor homes or trailers of some sort that are in really good condition, and they're using that for homeless people. And so, where, they spent like $67,000, and they were able to purchase like four different trailers or mobile homes that people are now currently living in. They already had water and sewer hookups there, because it was a mobile home park, and electricity. So, that was a pretty clever idea, you know, and, and I think other communities can model something like that. I mean, I know our mobile home parks are filled, I get that, but, you know, when you think of things like open space, and, and maybe, you know, something that's already somewhat developed with water, sewer, and, and electricity. So, it's a very clever idea, and it's functioning, and I think they have a total of six families that are living in that site right now, and hopefully they'll expand even further. So, that was some really good information. That's a quarterly meeting. Let me go in order here if I can. Uh-huh, yes, I did represent the city of Kattati at the Miss Sonoma County. I was not a participant in any way, I just want to be clear on that. In fact, I sat as far back as I could, when I got announced, I kind of did a short little wave, and the people up on the stage were going, "Is he here? Is he here?" You know, I waved, that was all I could do. And then, the Web Ad Hoc Committee, which was last Tuesday, so I got the preview of what we all saw tonight, and we went into more detail. You know, all of these, all of those different layers Damian and Katie were exposing further and further, and it looks really great. I mean, it, it's a far more navigable website than what we have now, so kudos to staff on getting all that work done. And then, as soon as that was over, went next door to the Wayfinding Steering Committee, where we had about 15 members of the public. I think it was a pretty decent turnout for that committee, and we heard, we heard a lot from the people that were there, which was great. Finally, the Parks Workshop this past Saturday, which I attended as well, I thought that was very well-attended. There's another 12, 15 people for that setup, and, and there was a lot of people that had spoken to me in advance, saying they had wanted to come, and they weren't sure they could make it, but they had a lot of ideas, one of which did send an email that I forwarded to Damian and Vicky. So, the, I actually wrote a note, this is, oh, I thought the clever part that came out of that meeting, too, was before the consultants, let's break out and let's talk about Falletti Park, or let's talk about this park.
Veronda Falletti.
No, Falletti.
Oh, okay.
Uh-huh, yeah.
We learned from that last meeting.
Oh, I know, I know. No, this was Falletti Park. But somebody suggested from the back of the room, said, "Well, why don't we come up with things that we want in all the parks? Things like, you know, we'd rather not have any chemical treatment of weeds and things like that, you know, maybe a source of water, drinking water at all the parks." So, there was, there was actually some, I think we spent about 30 minutes of the two hours focused on that, but it was really good, because those are overall goals that, you know, may not apply in every park. It was very funny, the, all of a sudden, I'm spacing on the name of the park, at the northernmost end of town, the little strip, Draper, Draper, had six benches in it, you know? It's amazing, because you think of Putnam, where a lot of people go, and there's one. So, yeah, you know, there's, you know, there'll be a nice balance eventually coming out through this process, so, and as the city manager mentioned, there's a lot of opportunity for people to comment, and don't hold back, send those comments in. And I am done. Thank you.
And I'm going to go over to the next chair, Councilmember Harvey. Do you have any report for us tonight?
I do not.
Very good, thank you. That was very brief. But I'm going to look over this way, go to Councilmember Skilman.
Um, I also do not have anything to report out this meeting. I'm swearing I'm going to get to a library advisory board meeting soon. It's just, I'm blaming billable hours at this point, but I'm going to make a point of going.
Never blame billable hours, just keep track of them.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore.
Uh, just a kind of a reiteration of the session at the Master Park Plan on Saturday. I thought it was very well-attended, and had some pretty good ideas, and look forward to watching that mature.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree. I didn't get to be there, but I do appreciate the public input, particularly on the usage of chemicals on a regular basis, wherever we can, my personal take and Lisa's, that I think might mirror some of theirs, so we won't get into that. But I do have two reports for you, and let's see. First of all, last week, as the vice mayor mentioned, I was there and did chair the first meeting for our Wayfinding Steering Committee. This was our kickoff meeting. It was very well-attended. I think of the chairs we had available, we got over 60%, maybe closed even 70% of the chairs full, so we had a good occupancy and good input from the public. And it was basically a very good introduction to the process of how this works, some initial research, and, and some initial public input into what the community goals, and more importantly, what's the community identity for Kattati? You know, what does Kattati, Sea Kattati, looking like? What does it want its wayfinding, its signage, its identity to look like? So, that was pretty valuable. So, I think it's going to be a good process as we go forward. Uh, let's see, two related items taken as one. We made a meeting interim action for Sonoma Clean Power, where we chose to support Phil Ting, Assembly Member Ting, 1745. And then, yesterday, at SCTAR CPA, Sonoma County Transit Authority and Regional Climate Protection Authority, we also unanimously supported AB 1745. This is a somewhat big bill, in that it will require that all new vehicles, any new vehicle purchased after 2040, starting in 2040, would have to be zero emissions, which makes it look like that would likely be an EV vehicle. I think at both boards, there was recognition, this was a big step, and could have some controversial aspects, but there was a recognition of two things that I think gave a comfort level to supporting it. And then, number one, having a 22-year phasing period really was long enough to solve some of those issues, and more than long enough. And secondly, for those two organizations, both Sonoma Clean Power, as well as SCTA/RCPA, it really fit both their policy and their stated goals, so that was of interest. And that's all I have to report for you tonight. So, that concludes council member reports, and we are now into public comment on non-action agenda items, item number 15. And there it is again, fastest hand in the West. Very good.
First, on city council member reports, I would like to remind the council that Mr. Lammon is a paid consultant for Lean Energy USA, and he is also now reporting on support for legislation, and that is definitely a conflict of interest and inappropriate to be, bring up in a meeting. The other area I wanted to talk about is future agenda items. I think we need to have something about the, the development of the west side of the freeway, the one that is in the, the critical habitat of this Tiger Salamander. We, we're not part of the Wayfinding Pro, Program, we're not part of the parks, we don't have a park out there, we have bad roads. When, three years ago, when we had the update, we had two full rooms of people come in on the update and tell that, their wishes, and they've been totally ignored. So, I do think you need to go, look at, everything is geared toward the east side of town, and you need to be listening to the west, and I think that's very important, to start focusing on the future of the west side, too. Thank you.
And thank you for that. And anyone else? Mr. Berich, please approach.
Counsel, for a future agenda, I'd like to see you ask the city attorney to come up here and give a presentation on what she does for our city. She's supposed to represent the city, but she also represents the other law firms that you hire, that she recommends, her firm recommends, to defend you in lawsuits against the city. The city attorney was privy to the lawsuit that I filed in federal court against the city of Kattati. She advised you, she recommended another law firm, she gave you ongoing reports about that lawsuit, she gave you her advice on how to, that you should settle that lawsuit. I first offered one, to settle for $1 in apology before the lawsuit was filed, but it is the city attorney that should come forward in the presentation to say, "Look, I take credit, and my law firm takes credit when we win cases, and when we lose cases, I'll kind of just shuffle the responsibility over to the other law firm that we hired." Because that's not the way it should be. And that's what we saw here recently with the city attorney. I also would like, on a future agenda item, to talk about what the city of Kattati and the police department want to do about school security. We've seen what's happened nationwide with these shootings. I want to know what the city wants to do, and how they're going to be proactive in helping the school district, and finding solutions to improve school security. I also want to see what you want to do about city council. I also wanna see what you want to do about city council security. We have very little security in here, and if anybody comes in here, they know where the city, where our police chief is sitting. These are two issues that you need to address in this crazy world that we're, we're living in. Now, Mr. Deloso, I wanna support, support him in wanting to put something he feels necessary to put on the agenda, like the homeless problem. Three years after he mentioned that it's getting pretty cold outside, last meeting, he said he wanted to put it on a future agenda. I didn't hear any support from Mr. Deloso's idea, and I think, Mr. Deloso, you need to kinda man up a little bit, you're a city council member, you need to demand that you can put things on the agenda. You don't need their, their approval. This is, this is an issue that was very, very dear to your heart, we're three years later, and you guys are still tiptoeing around the idea about it. I know you gotta get along with your colleagues, but it's, there's time to be a real city leader and stand up for your ethics, and your morals, and your core values, and I think that you are sincere about that, that request, and I wanna see some follow-through. I'd also like to put on a future agenda how this city's gonna get our city staff back to work five days a week. Five days a week, they're, they're working four days a week, and I'd like to see what you folks can do about that, because I think the, the city, the citizens are losing confidence, they're seeing our planning commission meetings canceled on a regular basis, design review...
If I could ask you to wrap it up, you're over.
Five seconds, sir, and the, and the fact that the city, city hall's closed on Fridays. I think we need to see that the city moves forward in getting our city staff back to work. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna look and see if there's any other comments, seeing none? You're tempted, aren't you? No? All right, we're gonna close that, then.
You deserve this badge.
Exactly, yeah, you earned your badge tonight. All right, so, we are at sixteen, any information received after the agenda was posted? And seeing none? With that, I'm gonna, thank you all very much, we are adjourned at eight-thirty-three, it appears. Thank you, everybody, and we'll see you next time.